Welcome this evening to the retreat of the Tacoma Public School Board here at our Sammy Environmental Learning Center. It's on March 1st, 2022. So, Mr. Superintendent, would you mind introducing our guest?
Yes, fantastic. Good evening, everyone. So, we are very, I'm very honored and privileged to introduce two of our leaders inside of our school district. Mr. John Kettler, and as John has been with the district for a long period of time and has a great reputation of helping us be more innovative and reaching kids' needs and community partnerships. And Ms. Joanie Hall, who is one of our co-directors here at Sammy and has a long experience in the district also with different levels. And they're here to talk to us a little bit about where we are tonight and what does that mean for our kids. And I'm going to turn it over to them. I've asked them to, I know we have a full agenda to try to be as concise as we can tonight and get them home as well. John, Joanie, tell us where we are.
Dr. Garcia, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity for you to be here and to utilize this wonderful facility. I want to thank Tacoma Public Schools and for its forward thinking and ability to think about innovation and to be able to create schools like Soda Sammy, an idea that exists for all of our, for students to have a little different option that's out there. So, the Environmental Learning Center here, this was built probably about five years ago. This is in partnership, we're here obviously at Point Defiance Park, so it's in partnership with Metro Parks. This is one of the facilities that we use, but we also share and use the facilities that the park system itself has. So, like the pagoda and some of the different buildings around the park. We work down at the marina with students. We also have the luxury of having some boats. We have a partnership with the Youth Marine Center. So, we have students that are able to go out onto the water and do research and do that kind of thing.
I got to do that a couple of months ago.
That's great. And this is, one of the wonderful things about this building and its design was really to design something was much more, if you would, like a studio or like a shop in the sense that with concrete floors and plywood walls. So, that when you come into the space, it hopefully sends a bit of the message that we're really here to work and to experiment and to make a mess as opposed to sometimes environments send a message that we need to keep it clean and can't really do anything. So, that was the hope with this. And then also be a collaborative space where the zoo actually uses this space as well and we share. And then we have a lot of different partners that come in and utilize this space as well. And so, it's kind of a community space with a gathering area like this so that a lot of people can use it and take advantage of it. Joanie, maybe you want to talk a little bit off the school day and students?
Yeah, I think that one of the great things about this building is that it is a space where collaboration and community can grow and have a faith to make that happen. We have tons of partnerships, but some of the really, really great ones happen within the zoo and within the forest and Metro Parks. We've got kids that are able to go in internship during their school day in some of those places. And our teachers are utilizing the outdoor spaces as well as the indoor spaces to give kids access to hands-on learning and place-based learning. I think one of the examples of that is every ninth grader in our school takes an environmental science introductory class. That's a highly rigorous course. It's two days a week, but it's paired with an outdoor education field studies class so that they spend the couple of days that they're in the environmental science class inside doing that coursework. But they then take that and apply it outdoors, out in the forest, out in the zoo and out in Metro Parks and down at the water. And it's just really been awesome to watch that happen and watch the engagement increase for kids. There's also a huge amount of the ability for teachers to collaborate together and do cross-content and cross-coursework so that they can do projects together between, say, our art teacher or our scientific photography teacher and an English class or Spanish class. But I think those are some of my favorite things. It gives kids a chance to interact in ways that are different sometimes than other places, especially the piece about being in the forest and being in the zoo. It's just, it's a different level of community that is built. And I think that's one of the, it's one of the pillars of our schools. It's one of the pieces that we are very intentional about creating opportunities for our kids to create that family, community environment. And I think it's one of the things that make, that really, really makes this school unique in a lot of ways.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about the space? I just, I just want to say that, you know, I really appreciate the opportunity to have students have a passion or learn more about something that they have an interest in, like here at Sammy. And I've seen a lot of kids and heard from a lot of kids who said that this was a transformational space for them. Both Sammy Soda and Idea, all three of them, you know, kind of to take something that they're really excited about in a space that's not, doesn't look like the traditional school and actually feel halfway forward. So, thank you for your creativity and your dedication to keeping the spirit of creativity and improvement inquiry alive.
Thank you.
I just want to add a few things. This is why the Environmental Learning Center versus Sammy. So, Sammy is not a place-based school. So, there is not many schools that I'm aware of that are really part of the park or is the park a part of the school. We love to teach our, or tease our partners at Metro Parks and say, "Well, it's not really a park. It's our school campus and you guys just use it as a park during the day." They use the Puget Sound as that space. Environmental Learning Center because learning for preschool, learning for adults, learning for kids and trying to get out of that idea. So, this is really a unique space. We could have never done this without our partnership with Metro Parks and the leadership of the parks commissioners, not only from a legal side, but from a visionary side. And we would have never been able to do this without John Kettler. There were a thousand times at least where we all could have said, "No, it's not going to work." And John consistently reminds us to say, "Yes, I hear you, but what if we tried this? What if we tried this? What if we tried this?" And then has worked really hard to hire the folks like Joanie and Liz and the teaching staff here because it's very easy to create a box and then live within the box. And so, what is really special about the Environmental Learning Center is it's not a school. It's a place where people learn together. And that learning, like every good teacher, has to be facilitated both inside the box and outside the box. And we're so fortunate for the staff at Sammy as well as our early learning partners, as well as Metro Parks that have tried to use this space. So, if you're out there and you want to use this space and you're watching it, yes, the community asks that. And if you're a board member sitting here and saying, "How do I use this space?", the answer is yes. We got to figure it out. How do we do that? It operates all the time. So, thank you so much. I promised them that I would get them out here as soon as possible. So, if there are no other questions, I, Jessica, we are going to let them go.
Thank you so much. Thanks again for allowing us to use this space tonight. Appreciate it. So, welcome Director Galroy. So, we're going to move on to the next part of the agenda, which I'm going to turn over to Vice President Keating, who's going to lead us into collective team exercises.
I still like look around when I hear "Vice President". I'm like, "Who are you talking about? Who are you talking to?" I don't know who you're talking to. Who's that? Okay, so, it's been a while since I got to use my team-building games. So, I was pretty excited and might have gotten a little overboard.
You.
I know. It's shocking. Totally shocking. Okay, so I have some quotes that are printed out here and I'm going to have each of you, you might have to share. Sure, that should be the pile. There should be four.
I'm handing a pile to everyone?
Yeah.
You can see that.
And we can also share. There should be four there.
That's a good pile.
Thank you.
I think that is my favorite pile.
But what about this one?
I wanted mine to be the favorite.
They're all your favorite piles. You have doubles? All right, there should be four.
I only have three.
Okay. Hold on. See, this is part of the game.
I only have three too.
Do you mean that we always supposed to have three?
I just looked at that.
Nope.
I have three. I'm happy with my three. My three is as good as four, I think.
Those four are there for you.
And you are missing.
That one.
This one.
I can cheat.
Okay. All right, so maybe Cora and Beth, you can share.
We can share.
And then, because we, yeah, so let's do that.
These ones are not my favorites, so I'm going to take these.
Okay, okay. You said his were the best. Thank you, Josh.
Look, those are all different, right? Those are different. Look at that. See?
We did it.
It already, okay. So, what I'd like you to do is take a look at the quotes and then select a quote that resonates with you. So, go ahead and take a moment or two. And it could be just something that resonates with you in this very moment, throughout the day. Maybe it's a lifelong connection.
They're all good.
There's no wrong way to do this.
That's where you're at.
I promise. I promise. And so, go ahead and grab the one that resonates with you if you'd like.
Do you want this one, Cory?
No, 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 no.
And you can share. You can have the same.
I think I'm going to go with this one.
I like it.
Does everybody, does everybody have one? Okay, so, set that quote aside. And then we're going to take a little bit of time. And the question that I'd like everyone to just share, you know, a few thoughts about is how do you want people to feel after leaving an experience with you? Say that again. How do you want people to feel after leaving an experience with you? And I'll start as, as the model. My intent when someone leaves an experience with me is that they feel recognized in their, in my presence, heard and seen. Whoever wants to go next, I will pick you if somebody doesn't go.
Not many choices here. There's only a few of us. So, I'm going to go and go. Because I know as soon as you look up, you're going to pick me anyway.
I strategically placed myself.
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to go next. How do I want people to feel after leaving an experience with me? Empowered. I want folks to leave either a conversation with me, interaction with me better than it, better than they did when they were, when they came in. I don't know how I do that. There's no intentional actions that I do other than listen first, respond second. So, yeah, empowered is what I would, what I would say.
I'll go. Sorry you look at me. I want people to feel welcomed and understood when they interact with me, or at least when they leave the interaction. If it starts crazy, at least in welcomed and understood.
Yes, I'd say, I liked all of those answers, so that's all good. And I'd also like to, when people leave an interaction with me, I hope that they feel grounded in their own truth because, and passionate about and confident in what they're passionate about, not, not questioning themselves, more believing in themselves.
You two can run wrestle.
Are you going to scare them?
I would say I want people to feel like they were heard and listened to and valued, no matter what perspective that they, that they brought. That there was a space created in the middle for whatever there was, you know, whatever was going to happen was going to happen. And there was a space and a place for that to do so. And comfortable. I like comfort.
I'm wrestling with that, that I learned from Jamad is this intent versus impact. I'm really nervous about putting out what I want in my intent, but recognizing that those that are watching me say, "Well, that's not your impact." So, that was my pause. What I hope is that they, I put four things, that they're seeing, that they're engaged, they're heard, but, not but, and inspired to do more.
Being under the microscope is a real thing, y'all. We're watching. So, okay, so this is where we get to share the quotes. And the question that I want to lead us in the conversation is how does the quote you selected either represent or reflect your hope and intent of what you just shared? I'll read the question again. How does the quote you selected either represent or reflect your hope and intent of what you just shared?
Do you want us to go or are you going to model it?
I mean.
I got you. Okay. So, the quote I picked was, "The need to be right can stop progress before it has a chance to begin." And for me, wanting people to feel understood is really important. But if I get stuck on, "Well, I'm right" or "They're right", then we're starting from a place where neither one of us can understand each other. So, it's just something that resonated with me, something I've been intentionally working on, is stop leading into conversations with, these are the facts of the conversation, it's kind of opening a dialogue and allowing, both parties can be right at the same time and both of us can be wrong at the same time, but as long as we can understand each other, we can move forward.
And snaps are welcome. I just found out.
Along the spirit of letting others level up after me, I chose, "Don't make worry out of what you don't know." And I chose that because I'm nervous about not making worry out of what I don't know. So, as a cabinet this morning, we spent, I think, three hours talking about our equity work and being, looking at our equity lens and challenging our assumptions of what we think we're doing versus what others think that we're doing. And it really, and in the spirit of the conversation that we're going to have tonight, of like, I worry that if I dismiss it because I don't know it and not worried about it, that I'm unintentionally not seeing the challenges that some of our communities face.
I'm going to piggyback off that because I chose the same quote. And I said that I want folks to feel empowered after interaction with me. And I find it difficult, well, I can't find it difficult for other folks to feel empowered, but I, I find it difficult for folks to feel empowered when they come to me for a certain conversation or for a certain thing. And I don't have either the capacity, I don't have the knowledge, I don't have the understanding to shell out in order for them to leave feeling empowered. So, I, I think that this quote resonates with me because I do the complete opposite. I make worry out of what I don't know.
I'd say that a lifelong growth opportunity for me has been learning to listen. I talk 90 miles a minute and I think the same speed and it's hard to sit back and wait for, to see what someone else who had such a score. So, I picked the listening with presence and intent is a skill that gains strength and endurance with practice. And you're here to that. And I've gotten a lot better as I've aged. But I will say that how did that hook up with what I said about wanting people to feel after they left me is that they were grounded in their own truth and that they felt heard and also supported and that I helped encourage their passion for them to move forward. And you can't do any of that if you're not listening. So, I think that for me, this one is super powerful.
I'll say, yeah, I chose, "The need to be right can stop progress before it has a chance to begin." And I, it's one that I struggle with at home a lot more than I do in my, in my work life. I think in my work life, I have struck a better balance with it. But at home with my teenager, it's easier, we can get embroiled in a battle of who's going to be right. I'm not sure why, probably because he's 16. And, and so my, one of the things that I really try to walk through life with is that there's always a third way. And I try to remind myself of that before I go into a conversation that I know might be challenging. And then hope to be able to actually call it up, or at least quicker, when I, when I start to feel myself go down the path of needing to be right in order to make a point. And there's a quote by Rumi that says, you know, "The highest form of intelligence is the ability to de-center yourself and put somebody else at the center of the universe." And I think that if the world in general did a lot more of that, listening to hear what somebody else's experience is instead of trying to overlay mine on them and letting somebody, when they need to, be the center of the universe for a while, because I don't think we provide that. So, my hope that when people leave is that they felt like they were heard and that my need to make a point or to be right can take a backseat.
Brilliant. Everything is brilliant. Mine, people are more often, people more often react to the role you play than who you are as a person. And in my intent of, with my practice of wanting people to feel, be seen, recognized and heard, it's, it's a very big stretching point for me when undersuch scrutiny and scrutiny that often comes without full understanding of the role is challenging to center compassion in myself for the frustration or for the misunderstanding or even, you know, the actual real issue. So, I know that is a growth area for me since coming into this role. So, the final question, let me see if we got it one more time. So, how do you practice making, out of thinking about everything that you've all shared, how do you practice making that a consistent reality? And in this, I would like you to name a specific daily or regular routine or skill that you can.
I have a, I have a pal that I check in with once a week and our only goal is, is to talk about where we made mistakes during the week so that we can hopefully improve and do better. And it's also to sometimes celebrate the win. Like I was actually able to put somebody else at the center of the universe at a, at a moment in time where I felt so strongly the opposite. I had an opposite viewpoint of them. So, I do have a friend that I check in with once a week and we, we just talk briefly about what our experiences were during the week.
I'd say for me, I'm one of those people that actually got some benefit out of the COVID situation in terms of how we had to change the way we met. And because we were on Zoom most of the time, I was able to mute and it gave me an opportunity to learn how to breathe a little bit more and not interject. And so, wait, I was able to really listen and hear when the person was done versus when I thought they were going to be done, like finish their sentence and get going on my thing. I was able to really wait till they were done and then unmute. And just that whole process over the past two years has really helped me to not just think about taking that breath, but it also has made me focus in on listening. So, I think, you know, there isn't much that we've gotten that's positive out of COVID and everything. But I will say for me personally, that has been a helpful lesson.
I spend my day with three and four-year-olds. So, my need to be right does not exist in my space. And I think it really has grounded me and helped me a lot with adult conversations. As a teacher, as a professional, sometimes I want to be right. But because of like, it's just a daily reminder. Johnny said the sky is purple. We're going to talk about it and we're all going to sit there and examine why it's purple and try to understand him. And circle time can be a big chaotic mess. But when I have really rough conversations, I kind of think back on those moments with my littles and it brings me joy as opposed to like frustration about not being able to be right. But it is still a growth area for me. Like I totally practice it every day, but I'm still growing in that for sure. But I think just having the practice of reflecting on my day, because I do that every day when I leave one space so I can enter another space. I wear a lot of hats. And so, I think that's just something I take with me into each space.
I'm going to say, in, in order to empower people, you have to be empowered. So, one intentional step that I take almost weekly, I won't say daily, but weekly is I talk to somebody who inspires me. And that kind of changes my outlook. Because like I said earlier, sometimes I just don't have it. But this week, Antonio McLemore told me that what's inside of you is already, what you need is already inside of you in reference to it. He tells the apple seed story. And that's what I needed last week in order to realize that you may not feel like you have it, but you got it. And people need you to have it and understand that you got it. So, one thing that I do weekly is just to tap in with people who inspire me so I can be empowered and empower others.
I'm liking this. Did you want me to go first?
Sure.
On my best days, I try to just take a breath and listen. I'm listening. I hear all kinds of voices. I'm not trying to say that. I do. I mean, I hear the voices in my head constantly. This, I hear the voices of our partners at all different levels. I hear the voices of our kids. And I'm not saying, I mean, you just, you can hear it. And my thesis is not having to do what I want, but to try to find some way to help. And so, on my best days, I'm in the moment, even if I'm running from place to place in the moment. And just recognizing that being in the moment is sometimes an exchange for people that you care about that are saying, "Hey, try to be healthier." You know, and trying to create moments. So, my random way of saying, on my best day, I just try to not overthink the moment, but just be in the moment. An example, yesterday is, you know, I get a email that says there's going to be an emergency press release at 1:00. And, you know, I can't change everything to be there. I have to be in the moment for where I'm supposed to be. And realize that nothing is going to change really out of that 1:00. So, we can deal with whatever is coming out of 1:00.
Oh, those emergency press conferences. So many of them. So, going back to the role, the reaction people have to me versus the role I am in and we are in versus me as the person. I've got a couple of things. I have people that I check in, that check in with me. And it's, it's been interesting and challenging to maintain the kind of friendships that I used to have. So, I've lost quite a bit of community by coming into this role, which has been an adjustment. And so, having compassion and grace for myself is really one of the biggest ways that I can keep centering myself in remembering that the response and reaction that maybe I'm perceiving, because it's also a perception, it doesn't necessarily mean it's the truth or the reality. It's often more complicated. But that I can ground myself in being just gracious and knowing that there's a whole lot that I don't know. And that's always going to be the case. And, "Don't make worry out of what you don't know."
Thank you.
Thank you. That's awesome.
Thank you. Thanks, Lisa. That was fabulous. And I'm sure you want to keep these to use them again. So, we'll just.
You're, you're welcome to keep one, whatever.
Those are my favorite ones, so.
Let's make sure Josh gets to take all of these back.
Yeah, let's make sure. Should we sign them all, Cory?
Well, thank you. Well, thank you, Lisa. It's always great to start with a little bit of a, an icebreaker that helps us learn about, a little bit more about each other, but also share a little bit about ourselves. So thanks for that. Well, the next piece is, is the bit about board goals. And this is sort of a, just a reminder that we do at each retreat about what it is that we as a board decided last August to focus on in terms of our board goals and how, and what they mean to us and their big topics. But we've, we've agreed to, to work together to address them throughout our time on the board this year. So, and they're, as I said, they're meaty. We've got racial justice and equity, social emotional well-being and mental health, and family and student engagement. And last retreat, we dove into the family and, well, the student engagement piece pretty deeply when we did our question. And so when we were looking at, invited Director Stroger to, to lead this one and he looked at the goals and objectives and, and really wanted to dive deep into the racial justice and equity one. So that's what we'll be doing today. So before we go into that piece, I wanted to see if anybody had any thoughts or questions about the goals, how we're doing on them, what, you know, more thoughts on our progression. Because I think once we turn this over, we're going to dive deep and we won't have an opportunity as a group to have a conversation about how we're progressing on our goals. I can't believe how quickly time has passed, but it's already March. And so we've only, you know, we've got only a few months left of school. So just wanted to throw that out there. And I'll remind you on each one of these, we had decided we had some work progress that we wanted to do. And the first one around racial equity and racial justice and equity was monitor the implementation of the equity policy review team and the policy review process to ensure change results from the team's feedback. And I think, actually, that has, I think, been a really positive experience. And in talking, we've just done a survey, actually, of the equity policy review team. I haven't seen the results yet, but I, I think that feedback that I've heard so far has been that they feel engaged. And we've actually done some really good work with our policies and the equity. So I just didn't know if anybody had any thoughts on that or comments before we move in.
Animals in the background.
Yeah.
I mean, we are next to the deer. Like, are they coming?
Yeah, the wolves, you know, howling. The one on social emotional well-being and mental health was to work with staff to clarify the long-term vision and sustainability plan for continuing to access, access to social, emotional, mental health supports for students and staff once the SRF funds end. So that has a little bit longer lifespan, but we are trying to, and I know this is something that Josh can speak to, but you know, it has been a challenge to actually be able to spend the SRF money the way we'd like on some of those because just like every other capacity area, nurses, teachers, whatever, there is a, a dearth of, of available therapists who can work with our kids. So I really actually want to commend Superintendent and your partners and teams in the community, our partners and teams in the community that have pulled together to help patch together something that, for these, for these kids and our, and our staff to be able to help them meet their needs now as we plan for how we're going to do this in the future. I don't know if anybody had any thoughts on that one? Ever-present one?
Not for tonight, but something for you all to think about. When I think about these goals, you know, there's that saying, not everything that's measured is important, not everything important is measured. This idea of how do you measure these goals? Do they expire? As I look at these, I'm thinking to myself, don't see these ever-ending goals. And so my question for you, not tonight, but as we move forward and pretty ponder, is is it okay as leaders to have the same goals and be continually working on them? So that's what I've been looking at, thinking about, you know, as we, in March, August will be right around the corner with us. We'll have to revisit these. And so I'd welcome those individual conversations and what are your thoughts about that and encourage us to have, you know, thoughts of ourselves and with our colleagues when we can, and so what does it mean for us? But I would say that we have definitely not arrived in any of these areas. Have we taken positive steps that help the trajectory? Sure, we could articulate those. And maybe we need to articulate them more so that others can see them. This is what. I thought that just kind of hit me as you were sharing that, Josh, was like this idea of a mission statement, right? For an organization, when you have a mission statement, like when the mission statement has been met, then the work is done, right? Theoretically, the organization no longer needs to exist. And so it, like, for the first time, this, these goals kind of shifted for me in, in the, like, the framework of a mission statement, right? Or, or purpose, mission-purposed goals. So that, that's just something that kind of, because ideally you want to eradicate, right? Whatever the mission is. So that, right? Or resolve, not eradicate, maybe eradicate and resolve. So.
And I think one of the ways that we tried to address that last August is looking at these three buckets was to pick tangible things that we could do this year as a group to sort of move us in that direction. And, and we talked about the family and student one last time as well, you know, thinking about our student listening sessions and also evaluating our board committees and how that all worked. And we've done some of that work this year. So I think we've kind of tackled a little bit of each one, but as you said, Josh, they're not ever going to go away. These are all always going to be important goals. But I think one of the things we did do this last year, which I think has been helpful, is we added in that as board goals, that we wanted to look at our own board professional development and identify areas of growth, both individually and as a group. And as a result, we started this process of working with Beth and we're very grateful to have Beth Boggs to help us be more inquisitive and be more aligned in how we do the thinking so that when we can tackle these things as they come along, we actually don't have to start from scratch every time, trying to give everybody a baseline. We actually know how we work. We understand the difference between the two kinds of inquiry and which is more impactful when. So I just wanted, and also the other one was to establish a timeline and a learning arc because it doesn't happen overnight and it doesn't happen in one meeting. And so hence, hence we're here in our, our third, second or third, second time I guess with Beth. But starting this process of professional development, diving deep on one of our topics. And I want to thank you all for agreeing to do this because I think this is going to be transformational for all of us in terms of partners in this work. So. Okay. So here we are with our board goals. And now we get to turn it over to Beth Boggs and Cory Stroger, who are going to lead us on tonight's exciting dive deep.
Yes. Well, thank you for having me here. I really do appreciate it. I loved working with you all last time. There's some very creative, creative minds here. And to, you know, what Elizabeth just spoke about with, you know, these three goals and to Dr. Garcia's point, that there's, these are, these are challenges that are adaptive in nature. There's, you can't just apply a quick technical solution to racial equity and justice, to social emotional well-being and mental health. There's aspects of it that you can apply and, and get some forward movement on, but they're really adaptive challenges, which adaptive challenges are those challenges that often leaders want to solve last because they require a shift in values, a shift in belief. Oftentimes, there, there are problems that are never going to be solved per se. They're not something that you can necessarily check off a list. And so, you know, in terms of making progress towards them, that's, that's really fantastic. And by the time you've created one plan, the world has probably shifted again and now you're into a new set of challenges around the same, the same goals. And those are the hard ones to lean into. So I really appreciate and have just deeply respect, grateful that my, my child that's in the, in Tacoma Public Schools gets to benefit from the wisdom of you all being able to lean into some of those really adaptive challenges and not trying to stop and apply a technical solution so that you can check it off the list. Because this is the hard work. It requires change in a lot of places, usually across the whole organization boundaries. It doesn't, doesn't rest just in one, one spot. People often resist even acknowledging adaptive challenges or your ability to lean in and recognize that this is, yes, updating a policy or putting something in place so that you have a framework is really important, but then how you actually engage in that and that work is, is, is a lot more challenging. And that's, the solutions are going to require probably a lot of experiments, new discoveries. They can take a long time to implement and, and then often, once you make progress on a goal, particularly these ones, the world has shifted again and the need is different. So I love the peer consulting methodology. Just as a quick refresher, it was developed by Ron Hyfetz and Marty Linsky of the Cambridge Leadership Associates. It's one framework for being able to co-create new solutions and get new thinking to some of your biggest adaptive leadership challenges. It takes the wisdom in the room and puts whoever has the question, quote unquote, "on the balcony." The balcony is a place where you get to try on new things, hear different ideas, maybe see the problem from a different purview. It can work in groups of, you can do this methodology. What's beautiful is just even having the framework. You can do it yourselves. You can do it with family issues. I've done it with my own board of directors at one point when we were, when I was wrestling with an issue. They can be done in groups of 800 or they can be done in groups of six, which is the beauty of it. It's a very specific model. So before we go into each section, I'm going to remind you what the, what the, the point or the instruction is for that section. And the reason it's laid out this way and sometimes the challenge with it is that leaders want to go into brainstorming solutions. And this gives the least amount of time for solution and the greatest amount of time for just lending different perspectives to what the issue might be and what it might entail. And so it keeps you in the wonder zone, I think, for quite a bit longer, which is probably one of the places that turns my stomach the most sometimes and makes my hands sweaty. But this model allows for that to happen in, in any group of people. So Cory has so graciously brought forth a really thoughtful question. And so the first step of this, and I'll be your, your timer again. Tracy, I'd love it if, when we get to that point, the brainstorming things, if you would be able to capture them, or I can too, if you, if you would like to, like me to. So the first step is the case presentation. It's five minutes. And so Cory is going to have five minutes to present his adaptive leadership challenge. He's going to name that. This is not a time to ask questions or, or interrupt him. He gets up to five minutes to explain what the, what the challenge is, a little bit of the background. And then the next step is that you will have 10 minutes afterwards to ask as many questions as you'd like to in your effort to understand his adaptive leadership challenge more fully. So Cory, whenever you're ready, I'm going to start the timer. You're not five minutes, friend.
Start with the question, right?
Yeah.
All right. So I'll put the question out here. It, it goes as such. How does our current policy reflect our values and support our goal to be an anti-racist school community? All right? How does our current policy reflect our values and support our goal to be an anti-racist school community? And here's what I've been thinking and here's how I landed on this question. We, we all understand that the policies that are listed on our board, on our, on our school district website are in service of students, their families and our staff. And, and I noticed that. So policy 3111 is our non-discrimination and equity policy. So that allows me to give you some context to, behind our question. We, we haven't updated this specific policy in eight years. So it was, I guess, written in 2014 and posted in 2014 and there hasn't been anything done with it since then. And we all know that the world has changed tremendously since 2014. In my, in my fellowship with school board partners, who is a national cohort, the, the purpose of that organization is to assist leaders in reimagining policies, partnerships and conditions so that dynamic systems of high-quality schools emerge, improve and endure. And, and our most, in our most recent conversation, it has been around moving towards anti-racism and getting out of the gray area. And, and in this conversation, a few questions were presented. We talked about, hey, do you believe if your, that your school district is, is anti-racist or moving towards it? And then the next question was, how? Right? So I took the next step. I mean, I talked about a couple of different things when we were together in our cohort meeting, but I took the next step to search our district website for, for the key term, anti-racist or anti-racist. And I didn't find anything. Now, I do understand that in, in our specific case, the topic relevant statement is in the work. Like we know, everybody at this table knows that, that we lead with equity. And I know for a fact where we stand as a district. But it brought me to think, the public, they don't know what we know. And if, if, if they go to our website and can't find something, they're left to guess and assume, which is what brought me to wanting to jump into this. So I, I obviously, we had a conversation pre, pre this retreat and our superintendent brought up a great point. We, we never really arrive at anti-racism. It is constant adaptation. So we have to take a deep dive to gather if our policies are relevant and, and should we decide, we also should decide how often we will review said policies and things of that nature. Some of that work has already started, but we have to decide with the understanding that this work is never complete. We have about 12 listed core values as it relates to the strategic plan. The relevant values to this question and discussion are, and I pulled these from our website on the page that shares space with our strategic plan, just for the public who might be listening. Students first, flexible, continuous improvement, data-driven decision-making, effective leadership, cultural understanding, equity and transparency. Some of the other thoughts that popped in my head was if we have equity covered and we have non-discrimination covered, why, Cory, do you feel the need to push this conversation? And, and the reason I feel like we should discuss this is because being anti-racist is very specific and requires very focused work. And it's completely different from, and stands alone from equity and non-discrimination. We learned in our last retreat that the need for shared definitions of what a topic is often helps us to ensure that everyone is on the same page. So in the few anti-racist policies that I have reviewed from school districts, I did notice that the definitions are either very close or the exact same, which isn't necessarily bad thing. That means that schools are, you know, taking something that they agree on and moving forward. So I have those listed out. You think I should read them or should I just?
You have funny three seconds to do what you would like.
All right, I'll read, I'll read anti-racism. This is the one that's common. The practice of identifying, challenging and changing the values, structures and behaviors that perpetuate systemic racism. That's my case presentation with seven seconds to go.
Can you repeat that last sentence?
Yes, I'll read the whole thing. The practice of identifying, challenging and changing the values, structures and behaviors that perpetuate systemic racism.
Thank you.
Would you, would you like 30 extra seconds to read the definition of institutional racism? Because I think it will help frame tonight the, the discussion that you brought, so.
Perfect. And then I'll read the institutional racism definition as well. It occurs within institutions and organizations such as schools that adopt and maintain policies It occurs within institutions and organizations such as schools that adopt and maintain policies, practices, and procedures that often unintentionally produce inequitable outcomes for people of color and advantages for white people.
Thank you. Okay, so the next step in the process is data gathering questions. So you all will have up to 10 minutes. The goal for the group is to ask whatever questions you need to better understand the adaptive challenges and the complexities surrounding it and to gather as much information as you can to conduct the diagnostic brainstorming in the next phase. So if you're not clear on who the major players are, who's going to conduct this work? What are the formal relationships? Are there any alliances? Where does the senior authority on this live? What has the presenter or the policy done so far to work on the problem? Those types of things. So you have 10 minutes. Ask away as many questions as you would like to.
Corey, are you ready to get uncomfortable?
Yeah, let's get it.
Hi. So, do you believe systems in Tacoma are racist?
I think that systems in Tacoma are built upon racist foundations, education system, the housing system, medical system.
So when you're including education, so you're talking about our system, Tacoma Public Schools?
All education.
All right.
Built on racist policies, absolutely.
So I have a question. I really love the way you ended it, which is why, talking about anti-racist versus non-discrimination and equity, because it's a different, very purposeful piece. So, and I, you know, I actually had the same thought myself when I was preparing and reading our policy and underlining kind of what I thought was important that was here, and I was really proud, glad it was here. But it doesn't address that issue. And so I guess my question is, what is it? This is a question, but what would you like to see out of this? What, you had a crystal ball, you have this conversation, what is there there that would keep?
I personally would like to see an update to 3111 to include very explicitly where we stand as a district on anti-racism. It doesn't have to look like other folks' policies. It doesn't have to really even provide definitions, but I think that we should make a stance publicly. Like, I know we do this work, for sure. But again, like I said earlier, not everybody is aware of exactly what we're doing. So perception is reality. If you go to a website and you search anti-racism and nothing pops up, where does that leave?
So Corey, who do you identify as the major players?
Us, the major players as the ones who have the ability to liberate students. Us as the major players, the ones who make decisions on policies, because that's our major work. Yeah?
Besides the board, who else?
Besides the board, I would say superintendent and cabinet, even students, and staff.
If you had to choose a department within Tacoma Public Schools that should be working on this, which department do you think it would be?
I would say all of them. Takes a collective effort.
That's so broad.
Broad, but everybody has a role to play in ensuring that we are moving away from racist policies and practices. You know what I mean? It would be difficult to place the work on one specific department just for the fact that, okay, what if they don't? Like, what if they don't do it in the way that we expect them to do it? And then everyone else is just kind of waiting on their turn. I think it's a collective effort.
As a parent, I know that work is being done in this area that is not reflected in the policy. So is there, are there places where you can, and I'm not looking necessarily for specific examples, but places where you can point to that say, yes, we are already doing this, it's just not in our current policy?
I would, I would point folks to the Equity Policy Review Team.
Yeah.
For sure. Because we know the purpose of that, and we know that that's built with community members, a few board members, staff members taking part.
And do they meet regularly?
I would reflect to President Von Bright on how often the Equity Policy Review Team meets.
It actually meets every time that we have a policy we're reviewing. And so it's not constant, but it's pretty regular. So we've got, we had a couple that came up to create time, a board meeting, so they would meet before each of them. So, and then we also have a schedule that we put forward of ones that, those are when new ones are coming up or when they're being up for review for a different reason. But we also have a schedule of the ones we want to take on just for changing equity in general.
Yeah.
And we decided as a group that we wanted to start with the student-focused one. And so that, you know, we have a thousand series, you know, 1,000, 2,000, 3,000. So the one that deals with students is, Josh, help me out.
3,000.
3,000? Yeah. So the 3,000 series is the one that we said, when we have a space that we aren't looking at new policies or providing add-ons for legal reasons, we want to be working with student-focused.
So that's where the work has started, at the student level?
As I said, it's been all different across all of them because we had some that were backed up that we had to pass with the board, and we said, we don't want to do that and then go back and do equity.
Got it.
Everything that's coming before the board is going through this policy review team.
Thank you.
I've got a question. So as a board member, you've been here longer than me, but not very long, what have you done so far to work on this problem?
What have I personally done?
Because what has the presenter done so far to work on the problem?
Well, I'm going to say that while Corey presented it, the focus of this is on the policy, not on Corey as an individual.
He said that the board has the power and he's a board director. So as someone who's been on the board, what have you done?
I've supported the way forward, for sure. Definitely stood firm next to Director Von Bright and the Equity Policy Review Team, definitely brought forth the Black History Proclamation Conversation, definitely supported all of our school renaming for all of the reasons that they needed to be supported, and will continue. And I wake up every day, and I come to work every day.
That's right.
No, no, I'm just trying to, I want to be a good participant in this whole work. So I'm, keep on, my job is to keep on going back to this question.
Yeah.
So how does the current policy reflect our values and support our goal to be anti-racist? So in that spirit, Corey, do you see a senior authority on this issue, knowing that it's, maybe there's the policy and then there's all the work that falls into place? I'm just thinking. From your experiences around, whether it's your professional organizations, is there a senior authority out there on what is an anti-racist school district look like?
I have not seen a senior authority. And I don't think that there are, and this is just me because I don't know, but I don't know how many school districts are having this conversation right now, to be honest with you. Those that have moved forward have decided as a board to put forth either proclamation and/or the policy, as we've seen in some of our supporting documents here. So I don't know if there's an authority, so much to say, but folks are just deciding that, hey, we're going to take a stand either against this or move away from this, and they're just doing so.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question to that. So thinking about, so our role as the board is in implementing and advocating for policy. So this would have significant systematic implications. So curious about, like, the buy-in, right? So if we as the board, right, our leadership, how do you, what areas and/or what groups could we?
Do you have the formal relationships and formal alliances?
No, more like, I'm more thinking, like, who's not at the table? Right? Whose voices do we collectively not necessarily hear from? And not that it's from a place of mal-intent? So I'm just curious if you've thought about that.
As far as which voices do we need to still have at the table? Obviously, those parents who can't regularly attend board meetings, the parents of those who are students that are most impacted by us not having anti-racist policies, majority are black and brown young people. How we get them to the table is a different conversation. But I definitely think that the families of our black and brown families who have, the parents of our black and brown kids who work later than the school board meetings take place, who can attend Equity Policy Review Team meetings, those folks need a space created for them to pop in. How that happens, I have no idea.
And then that makes me think about our community partners.
Yeah.
And that dynamic with our community partners, because in essence, we would policy, the moral, yeah, I'm not going to do a word right, but by implementing an anti-racist policy or a policy that is specifically about institutional anti-racism, we are, well, one way you could see is inviting partners to participate and also potentially excluding partners. Right? So curious about your thoughts around if you've considered that aspect.
I hadn't, but it's a great point of view, especially since I think we essentially would open it up to everyone, and hopefully that everyone would come in and, you know, offer some perspective. And if they don't have, you know, I'm big on if you've got something, if you're going to speak, make sure you have something to say. So if folks are going to come in, the hope is that they can contribute. And if they don't have anything to contribute, then they allow folks who need to get their voices out to get their voices out.
Okay. So the next phase is the diagnostic brainstorming phase, which is 15 minutes. And this is the point where the case presenter is going to turn his or her chair around. I would say have you go in the middle, but then you'd just be staring right into the camera, and I don't think that's fair to you.
That's right.
So I think even if you just turn your chair, you know, and look back that other direction or whatever, nobody.
I can't even look outside at the nature of it.
And Tracy will so graciously capture all of the questions and conversation, you know, the brainstorming ideas that are presented so that you have them for reference later. The full board will have them for reference later. This is not an action step. This 15 minutes is not designed for creating solutions to the problem. It is, and I may interrupt if I feel like we're going into solutions, it's really to interpret what's happening in the original question, offer alternative interpretations of the question, and illuminate new ways to understand the case. So some key questions are, what issues or values does this represent? Does this adaptive challenge represent? What are the underlying or hidden issues? What are the value choices that people will have to make in relation to this? What options are off the table in terms of reviewing policy, Tacoma Public Schools' policy and changing it? And what would success look like to all of you and maybe even to Corey in the one who brought the question? What might success look like? So this is an opportunity to ask questions, interpret what you've heard, and their ideas for Corey and probably the board to rent. You know, I might try this out and see if it works. If it doesn't work, that's okay. To buy the idea, love it, or to just leave it on the shelf. So there's nothing that's necessarily off the table. 15 minutes goes really fast, so I'm going to encourage everybody to give everybody an opportunity to weigh in if they'd like to, and to bring yourself and all of your personal and lived experiences with you. But it's really, all of this is in service to the question, which is, how does the current policy reflect anti-racist values? So Corey, you're going to turn around for the next basically 20 minutes. Yeah. Okay, any questions before I start the timer? Okay, here we go. Diagnostic brainstorming.
So we should answer the ones in the box, right?
Excuse, I'm sorry?
We should answer the ones in the box.
Not necessarily. There might be, those are just kind of, they're great conversation starters, but maybe there's even more. Yeah.
One of the, one of the.
Nope.
One of the questions that I think was raised earlier is, is there a structure already in place that has these definitions that we could, that are consistent across communities? And I think the ones that have been running now from North Carolina actually are from Government Alliance on Race and Equity, which is a really cool organization, it's been around for a while. And I think that if we think about, you know, can we use these or do we want to say, rather than trying to reinvent a definition, do we want to adopt these definitions? Is that a way forward where we can all be then speaking from there and then not have to spend a lot of time and energy on the definitions? If we feel that these are good, we can then potentially focus on the how instead of the what? Just a thought.
I like the question, how does the situation look to other players and what's the story that they tell themselves? I feel that, I brought it up last month because now it's March, but we're 64% diverse community here in Tacoma, our student population, right? So I feel that sometimes when you talk about racism or anti-racism, it becomes a black or white thing. And I feel that it pits an us versus them, but anti-racism is for all people. And I think that that's what has to be conveyed. I don't know if that's being conveyed in the way that the question was phrased. So if we're phrasing it in a way that's saying, like, anti-racism is for all, and, you know, the policy must reflect all, I think that that question, it just reminds us that there is an us versus them mentality when we speak about racism, when our students speak about it on campus, when we as a board speak about it. And then who raised the question? A person of color raised the question. So then, again, it creates that inner dialogue for those who may not understand that anti-racism is for all people.
Yeah, that's great.
It has me thinking about the experience that we, many of us went through over the renaming of stylists and the reaction and response by community members, some families, some students, when we were brought into the conversation of racist practices, racist beliefs, and trying to keep this as like, I don't know. So the diagnostic aspect that I'm wondering about is, in part, having, in being able to participate in this conversation, have a sense of comfort because of how uncomfortable and how harmful and challenging and emotional that experience was. And I know that wasn't just felt by me, and I know those of us that were on the board that I've spoken to about this. So I feel like we have some experience in going into this kind of a conversation or in discussing this topic.
So, forgive me, I'm trying to be disciplined to this question. I think you were here in 2014. I was asking somebody, I forget when you came. Was it 2018?
Yeah.
2018. So I might be the only one that was in the room when this was developed.
I was on the committee that helped develop it.
Thank you.
From 2011 until it was actually implemented. And I thought it was adopted in September 2013, was my recollection, but.
So you can add, I think what has struck me from Corey raising this question is how context, intent, impact, and how we have changed as a society. And what struck me is that Corey raised this question the first time, which was anti-racist school district noun or verb? I'm not very good with language, but this constant action is both, right? It's a dichotomy of not one or the other, but both. the dichotomy of not one or the other, but both. It is a person, place, or thing, and it is a continuous action. And so I think that language needs to be updated based on who we are now. And there are even actions that need to be refrained on who we are now. So Corey's question of how does the current policy reflect our values? I think it's, there are many values that are still represented there. And and support, our goal to be an anti-racist, I think the supports may be outdated in some places. And then I think what's really also is, it has to be localized, right? So I would, Corey and Beth provided us another example with these definitions. And then there were some of these practices that they had identified. And I'm sitting there, you're just getting to that now. So I think there are some supports, but I think in our local context, it needs a, it needs a look. So I'm not supposed to get to the yes part. But I think the options are looking at other models as examples, but not to, oh, we've arrived. Like, are there different things that we can see that will help us be a better version of ourselves?
I think translating the work that you're already doing too. Like, I know that if there's work being done at the school level, at the student level, at the parent level, at the teacher level, and translating that somehow into your policy. Because as a parent, as somebody who's kind of on the outside or has a kid in the school system, I don't, I'm not gonna probably scratch the surface too, too deep to figure out, to find the information that I'm looking for. And I don't really know exactly what's being done. And it's not that you have to have an action step, but I wonder if your values, you know, looking at whether your values are reflected in what what currently exists, that to me doesn't necessarily talk to the equity piece and how that's being delivered in a school system.
As we brainstorm, we can ask questions, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So like a question, there's one that says, what is off the table? And for my question, as Corey explained earlier, anti-racism and nondiscrimination and equity are separate things. So is it off the table to have a new policy specific to this? As they are not the same. And as someone who has like experienced these things, I wouldn't want just to be lumped in like, oh, these are all the things we do to keep just everybody in general safe. But anti-racism is like a whole different kind of practice. So like, I would want to see that. And especially, like you said, if we're going on the website to look it up, and it's like muddled in between this policy and like section C of policy number 311, right? So like, how would that make me as a parent feel, me as a student feel? Because it's the student policy. And then how can it be implemented to to the students for their understanding? Because this is, again, it's a 3000 series, so it's for them. So how is it off the table to have a standalone policy?
I appreciate that. I, I'm trying to figure out, looking at the examples, is there a need for some connotation? I don't think, one thing that I've learned in this work is there's not one thing that we all, so I think it could be dangerous for us to make statements and say all schools do these things.
Right.
I was experiencing, our team has done an equity lens toolkit that I think gets to some of the anti-racist work in a verb sense of, you know, for example, who are the groups affected by our program's policies and practices? And what are the potential impacts of these groups? How do you intentionally involve stakeholders who are also members of the community affected by our programs? I think there's some other questions. Things like that can help us articulate what's happening in buildings to show potential steps to not be intact or to be an anti-racist versus this is what we're all doing. And I think as an organization, we have to get, get to train ourselves to be more comfortable both asking that and then responding to that, knowing that every one of the 57 sites has a different life and culture. And I really appreciate what you said, Chelsea, is, you know, and tying it back to this institutional definition occurs when institutions or organizations such as schools that adopt and maintain policies, practices, and procedures that often unintentionally produce inequitable outcomes for people of color and advantages of white people. So if 60% of our population is other than light, then we have to be more, I think there's an opportunity to be thus consistent by how we're asking ourselves, are we practicing that? And then reporting that back to the community that is different from site to site.
Yeah.
But linked together.
It's the kind of the concept of both and. Yeah. That can be this and that, depending on the situation and where it's, where it's happening.
And not to take our time, it's like 10 seconds. For me, nondiscrimination has always felt like colorblindness. It's just like, oh, I don't see color because I'm being nondiscriminatory. I'm treating everyone the same. It's more equality than equity for me, is how I've always perceived that. So again, like I keep bringing it up, we're 64% diverse. And I keep bringing that up because if I can feel this way, and I have conversations with people of color on a regular basis, and they can feel this way, nondiscrimination leads towards colorblindness as opposed to active work, which is what anti-racism is, which was Corey's point at the beginning. So I do understand from a policy standpoint, it's gonna, it's gonna look different, and every site's gonna look different. But like, what do these words mean to people of color? That goes back to that institutionalized racism and common definitions. So this word nondiscrimination, how do people of color actually perceive it and receive it?
I appreciate that. I think our world is complex. And when this was originally designed, there were representation at that time based off of that intent. And I certainly am not, I think, trying to say this was it. I'm trying to reaffirm that.
That's good work.
It changes as we evolve as a society. I think about, you know, the SRO conversation that the board had was in 2018, wasn't even, it didn't appear to be as relevant to, and at the same time, it was always relevant. And so the practice, what is important has to be visited to the community that's in and out, not the community of the past. And that's the challenge with this as a policy. Is the policy supposed to sustain time?
Yeah.
So I have some context that I think is important to this policy, relevant to my participation when this was started. So in 2006, the state passed anti-discrimination protections for gender identity and sexual orientation that had not previously existed. So in that legislation, it was then stated that school districts in the entire state then adopt in their nondiscrimination policies to include specifically gender identity and sexual orientation. So that's where I entered the conversation in 2011. And as a, in a community group, it was a HIBB community. And so I think like, it's really relevant to, for us even now to understand the context and the history behind this specific policy and what the intent of the law at the time was. So it took from 2006 to when this was actually incorporated and then, and then passed, adopted and passed, right? Like, we're still talking a good eight years of time. And so, and we have continued to evolve, right? In in those topics and also in the conversations around racial equity, which are intertwined. They are not siloed and separate things. They are intersections of an individual.
I don't know where to add a clarifying, but I think the policymakers at the time, I think this is just an important factor, never intended this to be the all. The word that was often used or the phrase umbrella policy, that a suite of policies, like academic acceleration would fit under, and this would be the guiding principle to other policies. So at the time, I think just wherever this goes, it's important, that term umbrella policy was, their goal at that time was just to say, yes, there's this work and there's this work, but there should be this one place.
You can find it all.
Where it gives more purpose than the all end all. So I don't, I just, I could see those policymakers watching and saying, wait a second. And so I just felt the need to represent that. This was really an umbrella policy, not an encompassing thing where everything should fit.
Thank you. Okay, so now is, it's only five minutes by design, is the action step brainstorming. And the goal for this, in the action step, the five minutes you get for action step brainstorming is to offer possible new initiatives, to maybe throw out some smart risks, and experiments that the case presenter, which is Corey, but in essence, the policy, tried to move the challenge forward. What are things that maybe you can actually start to make progress on? What possible initiatives should be undertaken? What are low-risk tests of some of the ideas discussed? What courageous conversations need to take place? And I would add, and with whom? What new partnerships or relationship shifts might need to happen? And what are specific and possible goals over the next month to achieve? So this is where speed counts because you only have five minutes. So rather than explaining why you're putting this forward, this idea or concept forward, just put it forward so that you can get as many of them on paper as you can during this time, rather than a long explanation about why. Okay, so you have five minutes now to start going into what I know you're great at is the action step brainstorming.
Did you just start?
Yes.
I'm like, please let go. Well, one thing that comes to mind is community conversations, stakeholder, community and stakeholder conversations.
And the Equity Policy Review Team Committee, we have something similar to that at every school, basically. And we've talked about this being fluid. Policies, I think in general, should all be considered fluid and changeable at any time. So let's just put that out there. People know this can be changed and just have these basic recommendations at each school and some, maybe even their own wording. Each school may have a different way to word something. We still could have a central policy. A couple of ideas I may have, I'm just gonna throw out a bunch of other ones real quick, is somehow encouraging and institutionalizing more tutoring for the kids that are following through. So kids are not getting the equity that we think we are getting to all these kids. If a bunch of them are not getting the extracurricular and the tutoring to do better academically, how do we teach structural racism at each age level, age-appropriate language? Can we do a better job at that? And then we just gotta hire more BIPOC staff, specifically, you know, the teaching staff, the parent educators, and the leadership to have some improvement in the percentage compared to what percentage of students we have of those BIPOC students.
I think a quick, a quick action steps for me is calibrating definition of key terms. I think you have a mechanism already in place, the policy revision team, our policy equity team. I think a good first step with it is ask them the same question. Is this still relevant? Or ask them to do an analysis to maybe give you something to think about. And then I think what's critical here is that there is communications updates, no matter what, that need to be revamped.
I'd like, I'd like us to consider what Chelsea brought up, but also I think was part of what Corey was saying, which is, do we want a very specific anti-racist policy? And whether or not it's part of this or not, you know, if someone types in anti-racist in our website, something should come up to say, what is our thinking on that? And so how does that, how do we make that happen? And I'm not sure which answer is right, if it's merged with this or it's its own, but it needs to happen. That could be something that has to go quickly because that's something that almost it seems all the way.
And the question was, one of the questions is, what courageous conversations need to take place? And I think as a district, as an organization, I think we need to start talking to white people about anti-racism. And I think white people need to talk to white people about anti-racism. I think often the burden of anti-racism falls on BIPOC folks and BIPOC students at our schools, or even talking about having to educate their teachers on those things. So I feel somehow we've got to formalize that process, even with our staff. And I think white people need to teach white people about how to be anti-racist.
I'm staying out of the practices spaces because unless they are attached to the policy, so.
Well, that's professional development.
No, not a critical of your statement. I think there's, I think what's important to this as people watching home, there's so much more work that has to change. So I appreciate what you're saying. And it's in the, I'll go with the school board one from the other school district. I think there has to be some key practices that are identified. So is it curriculum instruction? Is professional development? Does the board establish this critical places, right? So I guess what I'm trying to say, not very articulately, is I think there's the need for certain buckets of the organization that fit under this authority, right? So there needs to be, thou shalt have an anti-racist professional development opportunity led by X. I think that does need to be articulated with the recognition that there are, they're not going to be a whole, all of them.
Well, I, look, I taught for the district. Your PD trainings can be trained by anyone and all teachers go to them. So let me clarify that. All teachers go. A PD training, all teachers go. If you're a preschool teacher, they have a PD.
I know. So I'd like to, I mean, we'd have to unpack that. It's, I mean, there's, when you do policy though, it's like, and how deep the board wants to get. So all teachers have to go to professional development.
Mm-hmm.
In some fashion, but not all go to the same professional development and not all have to attend the same amount of professional development.
Correct.
So if the board wanted to say, you know, policy anti-racist, all teachers, all staff would attend this.
Oh.
Then that would have to be locked into some kind of under the clarity of professional development.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, so we're moving into the next phase. Corey gets to turn his chair back around and come off of the balcony, friend. Welcome back. And it's an opportunity for you, Corey, to really, not a time for you to solve the case, but an opportunity for you to share what your reactions were to the process, share what kind of questions you might be asking yourself or thinking about in in your role on the board, maybe make some observations about what you heard. And that there's some ideas that you may rent, some that you may try out rather than buying or defending against them. And any action steps that that seemed like they were manageable or relevant to you. So you have five uninterrupted minutes.
Well, so I guess I'll start by saying, at least nobody said, I'm not having this conversation, grab this stuff and got a body here. Because we laugh, but I heard that this has happened before and not here. But anyway, with some of my cohort members. I appreciated the fact that everybody dove in and started to throw out some very good ideas around, like, what, what do we do next? I appreciated the the clarifications around, like, hey, this stuff is all different. I appreciated the the idea being tossed out, like, hey, let's not put it in 3111, let's create a policy on its own because this is for students, throw it in in the 3000 series. Let's see here. What, 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 oh, Josh's final point around, like, how the board moves forward as far as making decisions around professional development and how, and explaining that clarification that everybody has to go. clarification, that everybody has to go to professional development, not everybody has to go to the same amount. So in order to make this policy stick, and for us to get out what we want to get out of it, there would have to be a pathway put forward by the board to say, this group needs to attend this training, essentially, I don't wanna say mandated by the board, but mandated by the policy.
What's it like to be on the balcony with your back turned, and you hear all these things?
First of all, I don't sit with my back to windows or doors or anything like that. So it was nerve-wracking, and I tried to keep myself busy.
Thanks for sharing that.
I also remember that when Lisa did it last time, how she was like, wanting to jump in and add context, and, you know, piggyback on some stuff. So that also was very hard to not, like, raise my hand, or text someone, or anything like that. That's good, that's a difficult time. I would, I would like to move forward, renting, hey, the community stakeholder conversation, but also appreciated the idea around a school-based, a school-specific variation of the Equity Policy Review Team, as it relates to this, like, a group of students, to take a look at this, ask them the question, to see where students stand on it. I thought that was pretty dope as well. Yeah, so that's, that's, that's it. I don't need five minutes for that.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a comment on the last meeting, just good.
In a minute. Yep. Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. And so now it's time for the group, in a five-minute block, to debrief, and thank you for sharing all that, Corey, I really appreciate it. And that's for you all to kind of go on the balcony and reflect on, what do you, how do you think you did on the consultation? Were there other things, were there places where you feel like maybe questions that you didn't ask, or what did you accomplish? What are things that maybe you avoided that you wished had been brought up? Were there any default behaviors that, that you observed? What could be done to improve consultations in the, in the future? So it's really a debrief of the process, not necessarily the, the question itself. So you have five minutes for that.
I would say it was more efficient and streamlined from the first time. I think just like any new tool, like, we didn't have to, I didn't notice, like, there wasn't sort of the need to remember, like, when we were in certain blocks of the process. Like, we, I felt like we stayed in those areas better.
I thought it was actually, maybe it was the topic, but it was really much more focused than the last time. So I think we evolved, not just in following the boxes, but also refining our thinking process, and making sure that we did a little pre-work and had the questions asked last time, it was so nearly, we were all kind of swirling. So I see a definite development in how we worked on this project. So thank you, Corey.
I think that, I'm gonna lay off or add on to your comments that you made about really an anti-racist institution, community, whatever it may be, raises all ships, right? Not just the BIPOC people. But it's hard to convince those peoples that ships are already sitting high, that they should come along with it. So I think a little bit of y'all in the room is, there are saboteurs and people that feel like, this is all nonsense, and we shouldn't be doing this, everything's fine in this country. We gotta know those people exist, and how do we get buy-in, and to convince folks that this is good for everybody?
One thing I really noticed and really appreciated, Chelseaa, was your ability to ask really hard questions, and to speak from your experience in relation to the process. And I just want you to know it, I really appreciate it, I think it added a ton to the process. It shifted my thinking in a big way, so thank you.
Thank you. I will say, for me, this is a conversation that I've been having my whole life, right? I feel very uncomfortable having this conversation in front of others, and also knowing that there will be no action taken from the conversation, because this is not an action, this is not a meeting where we take action, right? I know that we're gonna take these conversations, it'll lead into our work going forward, but right now, we didn't get to say, bam, here's a decision, we're gonna be more anti-racist. So I feel also that, I'm grateful that Corey was, that everyone stayed in the room, and was willing to have this conversation. Me personally, like I said, it was uncomfortable for me, but it was necessary. I feel that that's why we're elected to this office, to lead these students. We have to be a voice for them, and their lived experiences, and we have to bring that truth to these conversations. And I don't, like you said, all ships have to rise, but man, I know that there'll be flat, as you talked about earlier, the role, and then you as a person. My role today was to be that voice for this particular group of students. But me as a person, I was uncomfortable, but I'm happy that we did it.
Thank you for sharing that. Appreciate it.
I already shared it, I started.
I know, but the way you're looking around.
Who's next? And you don't have to fill the time, just any reflections on how you felt like it went, and...
I think that this is a classic example of technical versus tactical change. I think there are immediate action steps that the board can take outside of this conversation. I think the board represents by different perspectives. I think we do a good job of trying to gather this conversation about all of the perspectives. You know, in our community, one that I struggle with is who's white in our community? So, and do we see racism amongst white populations to white populations? Right now, we are. Do I think that's always happening? Yes. So these ideas, for me, that our struggle is to recognize that we always have to apply this lens. I just, and I think there is an action step. I mean, like, how do we not look at our policy after this conversation?
Yeah.
Or a new policy, right? I think it's just, but I think it's also very important that we recognize, at least for me, I recognize that I am bringing my own perspective and my own life experiences. I was ironically having this conversation with another member of our cabinet today, said, you know, I didn't live this being a mixed-race kid my whole life. From Tracy, California, all the Mexican kids over here, and all the white kids over here, we're gonna have a boxing match, and Chris and Josh Garcia going, where do we go? Right? Chris was always smart enough to walk away, and I was just sitting there going, okay. And so I think it's, I hope we also give ourselves grace to recognize that there is not one way to do it. And to me, the only wrong way to do it is not doing it at all.
Yeah. Yep. I appreciate it. Good work. It's not easy. I mean, these are the conversations that make your hands sweat a little bit, and probably will cause a reaction, yeah, not just in this room, but it will cause a reaction in other places. And so really, you know, I think about Lisa's icebreaker, and how amazing that was, don't make worry of what you don't know. I mean, how timely was this? And I know it's because you're really smart, that you planned this tie-in. People more often react to the role that you play than who you are as a person, and I'm guessing that's gonna come. Listening with presence and intent is a skill that gains strength and endurance with practice, and the need to be right can stop progress before it has a chance to begin. These are all really relevant to this conversation and the work ahead for this board.
I wrote them all.
She's so talented.
They're wonderful. Thank you. Thanks again for having me, and thanks, Corey, for, I know that you asking that question was much harder than it would have been for a white colleague to ask the question, and I just appreciate that you, in service to the school, that you asked it. I know that there's a cost to that.
Thank you, everyone. I think that really was a magical night from beginning to end, and I, and I think, in answer, Chelseaa, to where do we go from here? You know, we can't make decisions tonight, but I'm sure my head's spinning, I think, I've already got some things written down that I'd like to talk about with all of you, and so we can have some of these conversations individually, just to, you know, kind of stir it a little bit, one-on-one, and then, you know, we will come back, and we'll have a study session, and we'll bring it up during a board meeting, and have some time to talk about it. We will do that, sooner rather than later.
Madam President, I appreciate you recognizing that we can't take action tonight, but I do think, and I do think...
And you do think.
Both and.
So glad you...
And I do think that there is an opportunity for the individual board members to do a little homework, and think about maybe two or three action steps that they would like to consider, and then sharing that with your president and vice president, and not that those will be decided, but then they can start to collect some of those action steps, see what is the next appropriate space to take action. So, no decisions being made, but that may be a good spot to think about this conversation from your own individual perspective, what would be two of the action steps that we might have more to consider.
I would add, when, so not long after I was, joined the board, I had attended the Equity Conference for NSDA in DC in January of 2020, and I attended a workshop that was around a district that I thought was in Louisiana, that has done this work. So I know there are examples, because the board directors and the superintendent, like, they were presenting. So I, and I have some of that, like, I've kept the information that they distributed for that workshop. So I know that there are also examples, and maybe part of, like, the next step is for us to interact with other board directors who have already gone through this process in their own communities. It could have been Louisiana or Tennessee, I can't remember, but I, those two states stand out in my memory. So I'm gonna look up and see what I find, and then definitely cross-reference it with what information you have.
Well, and what I was gonna say earlier, when I, when we were running out of time there, and it was a long box, sorry about that, couldn't help myself, but I will say it now, because it's one of those types of things, I was curious about the, I'm not sure how you say it, school district in North Carolina. So I went on the website, and they have a very robust website about this anti-racist policy and all these other things. And one of the things that they did, and this gets to sort of what you were saying, Chelseaa, is that they set up student-driven, student equity advisory teams at different schools, which you say the SEAT, 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 and so the kids had a seat at the table, and it's, they, each, at each school had their seat committee. And they got, and then these were generated, you know, things that were going on around equity and racism, the kids were calling it out, and it was getting addressed at the school level. So I just thought that was a fabulous idea, that I think we should consider thinking through how we get the students engaged, but also you have to have the teachers and the principals and everybody on board as well, so that it is a nurturing process. So it sounds like it might fit in well with our S E L, the child approach to schools. So, anyway, just one of those things I wanted to bring out, because doing some research, some of these things are pretty cool.
It brings it back to what Lisa had brought up at the last, what do you treat, and how do we involve each voice? And so it kind of like, it all becomes like a part of the process.
We, I'm not sure, have galvanized our definition of anti-racist.
You gotta get a definition first.
And that may be the first step before we start to develop different structures. I'm not suggesting that we do it alone, but one of the aha moments that I've had in this experience is like, why this other example was brought, is very clear, right, wrong, or different, their definition may have been, and it was grounding for me to understand, I'm not there to judge their work, I'm here to look at our work in other steps, and without even the right, we don't have a definition of what we're doing. We haven't called it out to say we are in a fall off, and here's what this means. So I just encourage us to even think about your action steps, not assuming that we're all talking about the same thing.
Yeah, language is so important in this work, you know, and Ahmad Canley, you know, so brilliantly taught me, it was an epiphany moment for me, as a white person, that privilege isn't what you have, it's what you don't have to navigate every day. And so all the definitions, you know, just, just to check where you're coming from, on even just, not just equity, but the things that underlie that.
Coming from the same place that, you may not, I guess you're responsible for the 6,000 series of four policies, but just even in the same place to say, okay, do we have something that addresses this? Because it may be in another policy, there's, that's a very healthy practice, as you go through your action steps. And so please, if there's anything, as you're looking at our own policy, if you have questions, you can always reach out to yourself, or to the staff and say, hey, tell me, is there anything on this? Because we may not call it the same thing, but that also gives you some, maybe informing your own development.
Okay, so...
Can I put one more comment?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I mean, as you mentioned, there, it's probably no perfect anti-racist, racist institution that exists in this world, right? So I think state calling that out and saying, we will be striving to be the best anti-racist school district we can be, and working towards that, and then also just knowing that perfection is kind of impossible. So we will work to get something good, but let's not spend forever trying to get the perfect product, and let's get something out, revise it later.
I, I think Corey and I, or some of our conversations, even the idea of how often this policy, if there is a policy developed, or a policy's revised, and the idea of culture, how often should it be visited? I've seen policies where they call that out. At a minimum, every five years, this policy will be visited. So I think that gets to, you know, this understanding that we're constantly growing, but if we don't find ways to institutionalize us looking in the mirrors, we easily slip and think that we're doing more than we are.
To me, which gets to the whole heart, at least, why I fought to be in this seat, is to be a part of institutionalizing these pieces, in the roles that we are responsible for governing, and because there is no guarantee for how long we have these positions.
Yeah.
And I want anything that I contribute to, to live well beyond whoever sits in these positions, whoever sits in these seats.
So I think we've got a plan for moving forward. I like that idea of Josh will, you know, have everyone think about, do some, do some research, do some introspection, and send to Lisa and to me, you know, two or three action steps. And also, I'm gonna add to that, if you have or have been struggling through a definition of anti-racist, anti-racist school district, what that might look like, what kind of phrases you think are important in a, in a definition, you know, send, send us those too, and then we'll just hatch what we get together from all of you, and figure out a strategy for moving forward, as a group, but also internally. And I'm thinking that we are probably gonna be having, we've got some more policies coming, lined up and coming up with the Equity Policy Review Team, so I'd like to be able to just add that to their agenda, to talk, you know, at least get them thinking about it. So we'll do that in, you know, we'll lay out a timeline, and some patterns, some pathways for that. So I'm thinking, maybe, we've got two weeks, I think, till our next board meeting? We just wanted to cut it.
Next week.
Oh, it is next, in next week.
We don't have to decide that tonight.
No, no, we don't have to decide that tonight, I'm just saying, so, you know, sometime in the next couple of weeks, you know, get us your thoughts, and as soon as we get something from everybody, hopefully get three days before he can jod on the plane, and then maybe can look forward with some ideas.
We have structures, like the committee, the whole business base did not have another con... another conversation of a capacity.
And, and the goal in terms of ultimate time as well, we, our next retreat is in August, is that right, Tracy? Yeah. So, so we have our next retreat in August, so we can be thinking about what we want to continue to have conversations around with this process. And we'll ask someone, someone else to do that next time. So thank you, Corey, for bringing us this very meaty topic and for everyone for participating, honestly, and with integrity. I really appreciate that. It makes a huge difference when you can see everybody's leaning in and no one's sitting there like this going, I'm watching. So I appreciate it. It's been great. And again, of course, thank you for all your guidance and, and Tracy.
Yay.
But we don't thank you enough.
Thank you.
You're amazing holding us all together and feeding us and the likes.
Earning jellyfish. A bloom of jellyfish.
Kevin for taping, taping us, Kevin, and spending your evening doing this. So it takes a team. You've got a good group, Josh, though. So is there anything, last, last thing that anyone wants to say? Will you adjourn?
The Lady Aves are playing tomorrow night at nine o'clock.
Yeah.
So it's at the T-Dome.
Yeah.
But just if you get a chance, unfortunately, our T-berths from Mount Home have got knocked out this week.
Oh, it goes now.
There's a lot of excitement in there, so there's one opportunity and then, so that's just a quick celebration for you. Get a chance to go down to the Comodome. You are, as board members, on the pass list. Mr. Neal can make sure that you have any, you have any questions about how to get in.
And it's nine o'clock, right?
Nine o'clock.
Last game.
That was the last game.
Nine o'clock is the last game?
Oh, the last game.
The last game.
Yeah, of the night, of the night, yeah.
Or the, excuse me, Aves. I was like, whoa, where are you going?
Yeah, no, no, of the night.
Language is important, the last game in the evening.
I'm not going to throw that, no.
Thank you.
Not going to eat all wood tables.
All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you next Thursday.